The Piscataway Township Planning Board Meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier-News. Notice posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. Notice made available to the township clerk. Notice sent to the Courier-News and the Star-Ledger. Ms. Buckley, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Waller.
President.
Ms. Corcoran.
Here.
Reverend Kenny.
President.
Mr. Atkins.
Here.
Mr. Foster's not here. Mr. Ahmed, Madam Chair.
Here. Mr. Barlow, would you read the open public meeting notice?
Certainly, Madam Chair. This meeting is being held via this virtual Zoom platform in keeping with the Department of Community Affairs guidelines that have been promulgated, and it's appropriate to go forward in this fashion.
I thank you. You can see the flag over my shoulder, which we all recite the Pledge of Allegiance in unison. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can we swear in the professionals, please?
You have Malvika.
Okay, Ms. Saunders is not here?
Correct.
Okay. If you could state your name, spell your last name for the record, and give us your professional address?
Yeah, Malvika Apte, A.P.T.E., 1460 Route 9, Howell, New Jersey, CME Associates.
You swear the testimony before the board will be the whole truth?
I do.
I think that's the only township.
Yes, Mr. Barlow.
Thank you.
Are there any alterations? Item number six, are there any other changes to tonight's agenda?
As of the agenda, most recently revised July 8th, 2024, I do not believe there are any changes to that agenda, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to pay duly audited bills?
Madam Chair. Henry Kenny, I'll make a motion that we pay the duly audited bills.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
One Corcoran, I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. And item number eight, adoption of resolution to memorialize action taken on June 12th, 2024. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we take the adoption of resolutions taken on June 12th, 2024.
Which was item A, 23 PB 23/24, Vias and Victor Spark Car Wash. Can I get a second to that?
One Corcoran, I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. Number nine, adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 12th.
Reverend Kenny, adoption of the June 12th meeting, 2024.
Thank you. Roll call. Second, can I have a second?
One Corcoran, I'll second.
Roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. Item number 10, 21 PB 31, Eminem at Hose Lane Phase 2 LLC General Development Plan. Ms. Elgar, please.
Good evening, everybody. Irena Elgar from Wyngarten Law Firm on behalf of Eminem, the applicant. As everybody knows, this is a general development plan that we're looking for approval on so that we can move on to our site plan, as everybody knows, which would obviously provide the board with more information. We have submitted several reports with regard to the GDP. As everybody knows, that this has been part of the township's Housing Element Fair Share Plan since 2017. We are proposing 121 affordable units. And we presented our application in 2021. We were deemed complete in 2022. We've had several, we have workshops with the professionals. We've had several meetings. This GDP has been in the works for a number of years with the professionals as well as the town attorney. We've done what we can to provide as much input as we can with regard to the GDP. And so from our last meeting, which was February 14, we had provided several additional information just based from what the professionals were looking for at the last hearing. We submitted those reports March 18th. We provided a revised project description. We provided a planning report. We did a fiscal impact analysis. You know, even though, you know, we believe it should be reserved for site plan, but that fiscal analysis did show that there were no adverse impacts on municipal services or and/or on the school district. In fact, it showed that there was a net surplus. With regard to the DOT, we submitted the letter of no interest, which indicates that there is, that development will not increase significantly any traffic. With regard to the traffic impact study, we also expanded the study so that we studied the most affected intersections as requested, even though, again, that was supposed to only be part of the preliminary site plan. And we also submitted a revised GDP. There's a common, you know, use plan, there's a stormwater plan, phasing plan, where we proposed five phases, and there's a preliminary signage plan, which is what has been called for in the GDP ordinance. And in response to that, we have, we did not actually receive any, you know, any more requests for information as of, I guess, March 18th was when we submitted that, until today, about 2:30, we received a letter from CME. And, you know, we plan on going through that letter. And, you know, I think that we can allay any concerns that the board might have that are raised in the letter. So with that being said, if you could swear Ron Allenbach in, please?
You were sworn in last time, but out of an abundance of caution, Mr. Allenbach, if you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your professional address for the record?
Sure. Again, it's Ronald Allenbach, A.U.L.E.N.B.A.C.H., Director of Engineering, Planning and Development, Graduate Properties, 1260 Stelton Road, Piscataway, New Jersey, 08854.
Okay. Raise your right hand. You swear the testimony before this board will be the whole truth?
I do.
You're a witness, Ms. Elgar.
Thank you. So Ron, I'm going to direct you to CME's letter of July 10th, 2024. We're going to start with page two. I believe there's a comment there that I'll address because I think it just talks about, we recommend timing schedule and municipal development agreement to be provided. The development agreement obviously will be part of resolution compliance. So I don't think that that's, it's premature until the GDP is actually approved. So certainly that will be something that will be provided. And with regard to the timing schedule of the development, we plan to, you know, do a build out in about 10 to 15 years is what we're looking at, I believe. And just from, you know, once we get all agency approvals. And I think that's all that, you know, that really needs in terms of comment. And then if you look at page three, Ron, if you could explain whether we included the parking space count in the garages and the driveways for the road townhouses in the parking count?
Yeah. First off, I want to apologize to the board and the board's professionals because when I looked at CME's letter and I went back and looked at the GDP plans, the parking counts that are on the page that show everything neglected to count the parking that's associated with the single-family houses, meaning the garages, the driveways, any on-street parking for the single families. As it relates to the townhouses, we were, we did count in that chart, we did count driveways and garages for the townhouses. I know it comes up later in the letter, but, you know, based on all of that and based on the EV spaces and everything, we will agree to comply with the parking requirements, but I know that comes up later in the letter.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess the next comment was, we recommend the bedroom distribution information be added to the GDP, which, do you think we can comply with that, Ron?
Yes, we'll comply.
Okay. And it'll be the same bedroom distribution that we provide in the fiscal impact analysis, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. On page four, there's, I guess it's page five, where Ms. Apte indicates that certain aspects of our GDP do not comport with the concept plan. Well, the concept plan that we understand it to be is the one that's attached as an illustration to the zoning ordinance. It's not itself provide any zoning standards within that or any, you know, again, it's a concept plan. It was something that was put as where the general uses of should be located. It's general location only for reference, and we believe that we complied with that. That's the first that we're actually hearing of the fact that it may not comply, which we believe it does because the uses are in the general vicinity, and it does call for us to come back with a GDP, which is what we're doing, and we're just solidifying where we're actually putting the, you know, the townhouses, what's happening in the mixed-use village. So as far as we're concerned, we, you know, that, that concept plan doesn't dictate exactly where all the uses are going to be. And then with regard to, let's see, page six, Ron.
Ms. Elgar, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you're going sequentially, at the top of page four, you'll just see a line that says, there appears to be a discrepancy, Ms. Apte noted, between the affordable housing units and that some say 121 and some say 122. Can you clarify that?
Absolutely. Ron, if you could address that, please?
Sure. It's 121.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so, and on page six, lowercase c, I think that was also the comment there, was whether it was 121 or 122 affordable units, and we're going to do 121. And Ron, with regard to D, the 13-story tower, we plan to comply with that requirement. Is that right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Can we go back a second, Ms. Elgar, just, and from page five?
Yep.
On, in the middle there, B? With regards to the public, are you going to address that later, the public square and the public focal point?
Yes, we will address that.
And then above that in A, and Ms. Apte, I guess, can clarify this, but in the middle of that A, but halfway through, it says, "This restricts the area within which townhouse units to those highlighted red or orange image above." This, thus this area of the development does not comply with the requirement to the zoning ordinance. "The GDP must be revised to provide the appropriate land use in the southwest section of the project." And if I'm reading that correctly, and again, Ms. Apte, please chime in and correct me if I've misread it, if the townhomes aren't allowed in that area pursuant to the zoning ordinance, so that use isn't permitted, could that potentially trigger a use variance?
Not technically the use variance, but when we were reviewing the ordinance, we believe the ordinance and, as Ms. Elgar said, the, the plan is attached as part of the ordinance, where it specifically denotes the areas, and this is, you know, as part of the ordinance, it shows where the single-family detached dwellings should be going and where the townhomes and the mixed-use village districts should be going. Of course, the, the image was in grayscale, so we interpreted and brought it, you know, that the red, blue, and oranges, what we have shown in the report as part of, you know, for readability of the project. And based on that, because if you look at the ordinance itself, it doesn't demarcate where they are proposing what type of uses, but that's how we've interpreted that the ordinance was trying to direct this entire town center growth, where they wanted mixed use and where they wanted the single family to go. So, you know, that's, that's the comment that we based our, that I think the zoning ordinance wanted the single family along to the rear, where there are already existing single-family users, go hand in hand with that. And then the mixed-use village district is what they are proposing along the frontage on Hose Lane, is what the zoning ordinance was intending to do.
Right, and I guess that's what I was referring to before, that this is, it even says in your report that it provides an illustrative conceptual redevelopment plan. And since then, things have changed based on meetings with the professionals. You know, with regard to at least the single family, there was supposed to be access to the, to the single families that border on the southwest side, but we, we, you know, complied with the request of the town, and there's no access to those other single families now with regard to the, the single families. Also, if you actually look at the illustrative conceptual plan that's attached to the ordinance, you will also note that there, again, this is, again, illustrative, and I'm just underscoring that it's illustrative because it says, "Single-family detached dwellings, 10,000 square feet lots," where we know that the actual ordinance allows for a minimum of 7,500 square foot lots. So again, this is merely illustrative. It wasn't something that, you know, these were the lines that demarcated where exactly we're going to put all the uses. But generally speaking, we do have a mixed-use village in the general vicinity of where it's proposed. The townhouses are in the townhouse, and there are some townhouses, you know, in the, in the other section, where I guess it's found by, what is it, the yellow. But that's, again, this is an illustrative conceptual plan. This was not something that's part of the zoning.
Having, I agree, portion of it, but I think going back to the, what you just said about, there have been certain changes after that, agreed to that. However, this is the zoning ordinance that has been adopted, and we have to rely on, the other iterations are still in, in, you know, in momentum right now. They haven't been adopted. So we are basing our analysis on the ordinance that has been adopted.
All right, and I'm saying that we comply with the ordinance. The concept plan, which was illustrative, is just merely illustrative for purposes of the zoning ordinance. Should I move on, Mr. Barlow?
I think he's, Tom, muted.
Sorry. Again, because you were going sequentially, I just wanted to, I had some notes in the, then I wanted you to just hit them up as you were going through the report, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and I guess the next comment on page seven. Ron, if you could, or I guess it starts page six to page seven, where it discusses the commercial retail uses that we may be anticipating. If you could address that?
I'm not sure what, except for the fact of, obviously, you know, there's certain permitted uses that are allowed in the zone. Obviously, with just a GDP, it's premature to talk about exact tenant lineup, whether we have retail/commercial, whether we have healthcare, whether we have hotels. We're not showing a hotel on the site, but it's premature to talk about what our tenant mix is going to be. You know, even at site plan, sometimes that's difficult to figure out exactly who your tenants are going to be. But, so right now, it's just, you know, whatever's permitted, you know, in the TC zone is what we're showing under our, what we call our retail/commercial umbrella, if you will.
Okay, so we're going to comply basically with the permitted uses, correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think Malvika was.
I just was.
Oh, sorry.
Another question. The reason for asking that question is because you were getting the additional bonus because of the qualifying Main Street commercial uses. I think we just want it on record saying that these are the qualifying Main Street commercial uses, and whatever is going to be proposed are going to be within these qualifying commercial uses.
For allowing us to utilize the density bonus that goes with it, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. The next comment, I believe, is under accessory uses E, that their clubhouse appears to be proposed in the western portion of the development, and we're, we need to just clarify and label where that clubhouse is on the GDP. Is that correct?
Yeah, we'll modify the GDP to show there's multiple clubhouses on the site. There will be a clubhouse located in the mixed-use area for the residential units that are over in that area. So we have a clubhouse that obviously Malvika pointed out in the western side of the site, and then there will be an additional clubhouse located in the mixed-use area in the lower right, over by where the public plaza is.
Thank you. And the next comment is under single-family requirements, indicating that minimum lot size for the single family is 7,500 square feet. And Ron, if you could clarify if, if the single-family lots meet this requirement, if all of them meet that requirement?
Yes, they will.
Okay. Okay, and then on page eight, with regard to the landscaped buffer referenced in along, I think it's, I think it's Skiles Avenue. We, do we intend to comply with that comment?
Yes, obviously in a GDP, you don't get to that level of detail to show grading, birmingham, landscaping, buffering, anything like that, because that's, that's more suited for a site plan approval. But obviously, it's in the ordinance, and if we can't comply, obviously, we'll have to bring it to the board's attention when we come in for site plan.
Okay, and is that the same, you know, basically with three, where it talks about the buffering between the single-family lots and townhouse development?
That's correct.
Okay.
But isn't it currently indicated as stormwater area over there?
Yeah, again, Malvika, we show, if you look, there's a tot lot over in that area. There is some stormwater there, but there is some area between those, again, they're just pictorially shown as stormwater because obviously, we have to fully engineer the site, and that'll dictate exactly the size and location of the detention basins. But there's adequate room between those basins and the back of those townhouses to provide landscape buffer so that there is something between the single families and the townhouses, especially in that area where it kind of opens up and there's a separation between the single families and the townhouses. Similar to what we'll do as you work your way south along those townhouses, where the single-family lots actually butt up against the townhouses. Obviously, we still have to provide that same buffer in there. It'll just continue down.
And I believe, Malvika, that you recognize that, you know, the landscape plan that we'll be submitting with our site plan, for sure. So that, that's, you know, something that we will comply with. I think the next comment, again, dealt with the conceptual redevelopment plan, and I think we addressed it.
What page are you on, Irene?
Page eight, under townhome requirements. Little i. And then with regard to III, double I. I think Ron just addressed that one with regard to providing the landscape buffering. Ron, with regard to the height restrictions in the townhouse development, could you just provide guidance and clarification with regard to that?
Yeah, it's our intention to comply with the height requirement for that area as well.
Okay. Okay, and with regard to the multifamily apartments and mixed-use requirements, do we, would we agree to comply with the height requirements there as well?
Yes, we would.
Okay. Okay, and then the next page, page nine, with regard to the town square. We're going to have Christine Capone address that comment, if that's okay with everybody. With regard to, I think the next comment to address is under access and onsite circulation, double I, where the zoning ordinance calls for landscape meeting, landscaped Boulevard along Hose Lane, Skiles, and Knightsbridge Road. We provide one on the plan for Skiles Avenue. Ron, will we comply with regard to Knightsbridge Road?
Yeah, we'll take a look at that and work with staff as to how we could comply with the Boulevard off of Knightsbridge as it, as it enters into the site for that main entrance.
And with regard to Erickson Drive, while it's not in the TC zone, we plan to comply with that one as well?
Well, that one's, I kind of defer to the attorneys on that one because it's not in the TC zone. You know, it's obviously shared property that we own, where you are connecting it, but it's not in TC zone. So I'm not sure how that requirement would apply to that or not apply to that, but certainly, we can discuss that with staff as we work towards site plan to see how that would impact zoning regulations, if you will.
Okay. And then page nine, continuing, triple I. If you could address the multi-use path and how it complies with these zoning ordinance?
Again, this is, it's hard to tell on a plan of just magnitude in the scale because we don't get into the details to show. And what we talked about with staff was to have what we call multipurpose path, very similar to what they have along Route 80 now, which would be a shared pedestrian slash bicycle. And that would be, again, a multipurpose path that would be adequate width to, so it's shared. So whether it's eight feet or 10 feet in width, again, we work at those details. But that is the intention for the bicycle and the pedestrian access throughout the site.
Now, Ms. Elgar, just to confirm, but, so that's the proposed bike lanes around the site, but as the ordinance requires dedicated bike lanes along the primary access roads, those are not being proposed?
Well, what we're saying is, well, the ordinance actually allows for shared bike lanes with pedestrian access, not vehicular access, obviously. There's a specific preclusion to that, so we're not proposing, you know, to have shared bike lanes with vehicular traffic. It's just shared with pedestrian access. And with regard to paragraph four, right after the traffic impact study, we did provide, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I'm just trying to find in the ordinance where it says the shared, so could you please direct?
Sure.
Because I was looking at access and onsite circulation. This is 2132.11, item D. It says, "Shared bikeway routes with vehicular traffic shall not be permitted."
Okay, so under 32.11G,
Yeah.
within that paragraph, I don't know how many sentences in, but let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, starting on the fifth line midway or so, "Bikeway routes shall interconnect with existing bikeways surrounding the development or shall foster the connection to existing future bikeway routes. Shared bikeway routes with vehicular traffic shall not be permitted." So it's, it doesn't, there's no preclusion for the bike routes to be shared with pedestrian walkways. And that's what the multipurpose path is for.
So there's no bicycle, bike route that's being proposed on the primary access way? It's just going to be a multipurpose path that can be used as pedestrian as well as bikeway?
That's correct.
Okay, but then does that comply with the item A of the ordinance, which says? Okay, but then does that comply with the item A of the ordinance, which says, um.
Says primary access roadways, right, Mika?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So how are we handling Skiles Avenue? How are we handling Knightsbridge Road? So E says, yeah, I mean, it says it just links all the, go ahead, sorry.
E, I'm sorry, it's B.
No, I understand that, but when you said again, it's Skiles and Knightsbridge, you talk about offsite?
So if you look at that same ordinance, Ron, sorry, I misspoke, uh, and, uh, Dawn just connected me. It's item B, the above noted primary access roadway shall be provided with dedicated bike lanes in each direction. And shall connect to township's existing bikeway circulation system.
So if I read it correctly, this is saying that you're asking us to provide dedicated lanes on the two township streets in both directions as well as Route eighteen? And when you say dedicate, you're talking about the separate, like an eight-foot bike path separate from the travel lane?
Uh, I'm not saying that, that's well.
I'm, I'm just asking, I'm not asking specific you, I'm just asking in general because I'm trying to understand what you're asking us to either agree to comply with or tell you why we can't. I'm just making sure I understand. You know, what you're asking.
That, that's the way the text I'm interpreting it. I don't know what the intent of the ordinance was, but that, the way the text is written, I'm interpreting it that way. Um, and you know. Feel free, if anybody else has a different interpretation of that.
I'm interpreting the same way, Mika.
And I think they both wouldn't might want clarification from our traffic engineer, Betsy Dolan.
Yeah.
And that, I think, is a comment in. Miss Apthe's report is deferring to the township traffic engineer for comment.
Yeah, the, the last point, the traffic impact study that the applicant has submitted, I do, I have deferred it to the township, um, engineer to comment on.
Okay, I mean, it just talks about, is there, and there's an existing bikeway circulation system?
According to this ordinance, it is, yeah.
Well.
I'm assuming, and this is, um, um, you know, I'm assuming it's connecting to, um, you know, the, the, the same item that you brought up. The single family, uh, loop that was, uh, going to get connected, uh, to the rear. And maybe there are bike lanes there. I'm not very sure at this moment to give you a correct answer.
Okay, well, I mean, I guess. The answer is, is there has to be an existing bikeway circulation system to connect to, according to this one. According to the, the ordinance here, so.
Yeah, a dedicated bike lane that connects that and shall connect to the township's existing bikeway circulation system.
Yeah. And I think some of the acts, well, at least with regard to Erickson Drive, that's not in this TC zone, so.
But I think the question, a- and just so unclear, I think clarification is that the roads that the, the ordinance is looking for, these dedicated bike lanes, it seems to be the three listed above, which is Hose Lane, Skiles and Knightsbridge. I'm, I'm telling you, this is not something, if, even if you come back and say that we're looking for dedicated bike lanes on Hose Lane or Skiles or Knightsbridge, we're simply connecting into those existing roadways. I don't believe that's something we're prepared to go out there and potentially widen streets to put dedicated bike lanes in, um, offsite. Um, and we're just simply connecting into those streets.
Right, so I mean, you know, with regard to the shared bike and pedestrian routes, we're, we're, that's what we're doing, the multi-use path. With. Is there any other questions with regard to?
No, so just to, you know, eh, just to clarify, so that item B cannot be met with this GDP. But you will be providing an alternative multi-access path to provide this bikeway and pedestrian access, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, hey, so on page nine, um. Okay, so with regard to parking, uh, it's. Comment I, it's on page nine at the bottom. Indicates that. Because we have parking. Um. Angled parking, I think it is, on either side of the towns, town square, we don't comply with the plant, with the, uh, with the TC zone, is that? What that comment is saying, Malvega?
Just for clarification, we have parallel spaces.
Oh, sorry.
Thirty-two point twelve E, so, um. Sorry, I'm trying to read an answer to you at the same time. So, um, I believe, um, that that requirement said that for the town square portion, um, shall be provided either within the common parking area or parking deck. Located near the rear or side of non-residential or mixed use building. We just want a clarification that, uh, the town square parking, is it only the parking that's around the town square? Or you're providing additional spillover parking around some, um, commercial area or mixed use building?
Yeah, again, it's, it's, it's not really dedicated for any particular use. It's obviously for the, uh, residents that are gonna go to the town square, the park, there's parallel spaces. But obviously there's additional perpendicular spaces and parking lots that surround there that will be available, uh, for parking.
Okay, cause this would be a public square that's accessed not only by the, it, it will be used by, you know, anybody who comes to the town center, is that right? Yeah.
Right, and I think that, um, according to section twenty-one dash thirty-two point twelve A. Um, it does provide for on-street parking, whether it's parallel or, um, angular. That in the mixed use village area, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Um, okay, so then the next item is the load, off-street loading, um, comment, uh, Ron, will we comply with that? And identify them in the GDP?
Uh, yeah, and, and obviously, again, the same thing, just like any site plan, if for some reason, um, we can't, then, you know, we'll deal with that at site plan.
Okay. Um, the next comment has to do with parking, um, on page ten. Uh, Ron, if you could address the. The parking that we are proposing.
Yeah, again, um, as I indicated before, the, the plans need to be revised, uh, to show all the parking that we're proposing on the site. And our intention to, uh, meet the ordinance, um, so that will be revised and resubmitted to the town so that we comply with the ordinance.
So Ron, could you just for, for the record, just, um, tell us the total number of parking spaces that would be onsite?
Uh, again, Malvega, without going, I'm gonna rely on your letter. Um, I didn't go through and, and physically check all the bedrooms and everything like you did. So, uh, your letter reflects the twenty, twenty-six, thirty-seven, um, that's our intention, uh, to comply with that. That number, once we obviously get credit for whatever EV spaces and how that all formulates, uh, into the calculations, but it's our intention to meet that. If there's a discrepancy because I have a different calculation, then obviously we could deal with that, but it's our intention to comply with the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and just, yeah, just based on, you know, how many EV spaces you're looking at, it's three hundred and forty, so technically, you know, that's two hundred, sorry, two thousand two hundred and ninety-six potential spaces. But. Obviously.
Okay.
We will comply with whatever we need to comply with there. Okay, with regard to the signage, um, I think. Comment one is just a statement, and so is comment three, but comment two, um, Ron, if you could just expand on that.
Um, this just simply talks about. There's a question about whether or not we would comply, and, and again, I, I think the question is, we provided the signage plan, you know, details are not on there, we'll certainly provide that. Um, and again, when coming for site plan, for some reason, we need to, um, you know, increase the sign for traffic safety, visibility, whatever, we would obviously deal with that at some plan with. Um, obviously we'll add some more details to the sign plan to make sure that, uh, Malvega could, uh, look at it and, and come up with exactly what we're looking for.
Okay, understood, and I guess the same is true for comment four and five there.
Correct.
That will come in with a more detailed sign plan with our, uh, with our site plan.
The, the only thing, uh, the reason for making that second comment was because we, when we define the sign area as defined in the ordinance is just the entire frame of the edge of the sign. So we will have to, you know, where you have the Piscataway Town Center and above that, the steel gap, like that entire area, uh, would have to be included. So it becomes eight by six rather than eight by four, cause you have to include the.
Understood.
Yeah, thank you.
And, uh, I guess the next comment on page twelve. Letter I, uh, it refers to the, again, landscape buffering, I think we had agreed that, to do that, um, already. And that we're gonna, you know, provide obviously further details with our site plan. Um, and that, that holds the same with, uh, J and K, and I think L. Um, Malvega, you recognize that a full landscaping plan is not required at this time, um, so. Okay. I think the next comment is, uh, with regard to, on page thirteen. Little I, um, and it refers to the appropriate, uh, height for the mixed use buildings, uh, which is a maximum of three stories. Ron, I think you indicated that we are going to comply with that.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, um. And with regard to the. Phasing, we provided our phasing plan, it just reiterates our phasing plan. Um, the next comment has to do with the building design.
Irene, I'm sorry, if I can, you're talking about the phasing because I know you in the beginning of the testimony. Um, so to clarify, the phasing is just giving us, you know, the timing when you'll start the first phase and second phase and third phase. And I know you mentioned at the beginning that this whole project is going to be ten to fifteen years. Are we gonna get a timing schedule in this phasing?
Well, I don't think anything more specific is required now. We couldn't possibly, you know, predict at this point. So I think that once we come in with our site plan, we'll be able to put, you know, better dates to, uh, and timeframes to each of the phases.
Miss, Miss Elgar, though, eh, and again, I, I, I apologize because. I am dealing with this for the first time, as is, I think, every board member, but. Cause it's not something we see very frequently, but if we look at forty colon fifty-five D dash forty-five point two. Which talks about a general development plan may include, but not be limited to the following, and then outlines.
I'm just gonna, sorry, Mr. Barlow, I don't mean to interrupt you, but just, could you tell me this section again? I have now the GDP statue in front of me, so.
Sure, sure, uh, I'm, I'm going to the MLUL.
Yes, I have it.
Forty, forty colon fifty-five D. Dash four.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I got it.
Dash forty-five point two.
Got it.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And again, th- there's a whole section of the MLUL that deals with these general development plans. Because as you said in the beginning, they're general, they're for ma- large projects where you're going to have different elements and, and I assume a developer wants to build. Pieces at a time, and that's why there's phasing, and it lists A through L, different items that can be included. And it doesn't limit the board or the, the applicant to those items. But if you look at K, it talks about a proposed timing schedule where content, where construction is contemplated over a period of years. And I know in the beginning you said ten to fifteen years, but I, I think the statute contemplates, look, um, you know. Phase one, we think will be completed by January of twenty-twenty-seven hypothetically, and, and so on. And the reason I think it calls for a little bit more specificity is as you go further in the statute. To forty-five point four, it says, in the event that the developer seeks to modify the proposed timing schedule, such modifications shall require the approval of the planning board. And it talks about what the planning board should consider. When modifying it, so I, I think the statute clearly is calling for more specificity than it's gonna take a decade or so. So I, I really think. If we're gonna, if we're, eh, eh, and again, I'm looking at the statute because I really don't, I can't tell you, I've done eleven of these and this is what we did in the past. And I don't think this.
Right, I mean.
Say that, so I'm looking at the statute and I think it would be helpful. To provide the timing schedule, cause I don't know how we can then modify the timing schedule later if we didn't have one before. The board gave.
Right, well, I think that.
Potentially.
Though the section that you're looking at is, is, is obviously, they're not requirements of the GDP, it's just what. The board, or sorry, the township could require of a GDP, but they would have to require it by ordinance in order for it to be required. But I understand the question that you're asking, just to have a more general understanding of the timing schedule. Um, and, you know, the, the proposed timing schedule really is from when we first get. All of our approvals, right? So we don't know at what point we're gonna have the, all the approvals and all outside agency approvals. Um, and then it's really dependent on the site plan. And that's where we're gonna be able to provide you with a lot more detail in terms of the proposed timing. At this point, it's more general in terms of what we think the build out will take, and again, that what, how long the build out will take will also, you know, from final agency approval. So we can't give you dates and, and, you know, any actual timeframes with regard to the GDP itself. And I actually have not seen that in many of the GDP approvals, quite frankly, and I, I understand that, you know, uh, the board, you know, hasn't seen one of these since nineteen-eighties or something like that, I believe. Um, but a lot of times, it's, it's really just, it, it, there's not even like a, you know, a, a, a set timing when, when build, full build out is going to be complete. Particularly because GDPs are supposed to be flexible, in other words, there's market conditions. Is at stake, there's other considerations, um, and until you get to your site plan, you really don't know, you know, how long, uh, any particular phase will take. And, and again, some of these, yeah, go ahead, Ron, sorry.
Sorry, Irene, and, and, and just to be clear, Mr. Barlow, I, I understand, you know, what that says and, but it's really difficult, even when we get to the site plan stages, to have some kind of definitive schedule, even if it's flexible. Because obviously, as Irene started to indicate, market conditions, uh, I mean, obviously, interest rates, what's going on in the world, all impact, whether you're gonna start construction, not start construction. You know, so it's really difficult to try to specify a, a specific date to say, oh, we're definitely gonna do this, you know, we're gonna start, put a shovel in the ground, the minute we get all our approvals and we'll be done in three years or five years or 10 years. It's hard to put a date on that because, you know, things change, the retail market i- is where it is today, who would have predicted that five years ago? Uh, interest rates, all the things that go with it, it's really difficult, so I understand the concern, and that's why we kind of put a, a rough timeframe on it, um, a decade or fifteen years, because we just don't know, it's a large project.
Um, I, I agree with you one hundred percent, Mr. Allenback, and that's why the statute forty-five point four specifically says. That the board in deciding whether or not to grant a modification of the timing, take, should take into consideration prevailing economic and martin, market conditions. So you're a hundred percent right, those are all factors that can affect it and can screw up the best timeframe. And the legislature, when they adopted this, specifically said, consider exactly what Mr. Allenback said, so, um.
Right.
Because it's in there, obviously, it was, it was a, a consideration that I think. I'm just saying, from my perspective, ten to fifteen years is a timing schedule for a five-phase, thousand-unit project is a little. For my liking, a little too general, and again, it's the MLUL, it's the, and it doesn't talk about an ordinance, it talks about a general development plan. And again, it's the MLUL. It's, and it doesn't talk about an ordinance. It talks about a general development plan may include, but not be limited to the following. So again, I'm just putting it out there because
Well, I guess maybe there's, I mean, maybe there's something that can be discussed in terms of a timing, you know, in, in connection with the site plan. I mean, that's going to be, we'll put our application in and, you know, we're just, we're trying not to create any, you know, fall hopes, false hopes, so to say, that if it's going to be done, you know, in three years. I mean, we, we certainly, you know, could limit it if you would like for purposes of the, you know, of, of the approvals, to the extent that the board may approve this. And, you know, we would be willing to agree to five to ten years. I don't know if that's something that, you know, Ron, if you could address that.
I think that's, I think five to ten years would be, we could probably commit to that to tighten it up a little bit.
I, I, I was.
Can I just, sorry, Mr. Barlow, just one. To understand, I think GDP is approved on the basis of limited number of years also, right? Like, I mean, I, there is, I believe, and I don't have it in front of me, but it's something like up to twenty years is when the GDP is. So I think, you know, based on that and based on your experience of, you know, obviously, you guys know what outside agency approvals you need and how much a site plan approval process would take. Is there like a timing schedule that, you know, tentatively can be formed on that? For how many years of GDP approval you're looking for? If you're looking for fifteen years, then we just backtrack it that way and kind of make like a Gantt chart just showing, you know, phase one, six years, phase two starts between the, you know, something.
Yeah.
Well, the vesting schedule is different.
You, you know now, I mean, I would think you know, for phase one, which is, you know, I think it's the purple. You know, from the time we put a shovel in the ground, it would take X amount of years to build the purple, which is phase one, which I think is the single family and some stuff. Now, again, and I, and I agree with Ms. Hapthing that you know, the, the development plan isn't, you know, to infinity and beyond. And, and again, if you need fifteen years, I'm not saying, don't ask for fifteen years. I'm just saying it's phase one, you think, you know, takes three or four years. Because I would imagine once you get started, then it's a little easier.
Correct. And I think that that's where, you know, once we get a little further into, we'll be able to have, I guess, a more robust timing schedule. However, at the GP stage, you know, there's a reason why there's, there's the allowance of an up to twenty-year vesting schedule. That's, you know, there's a reason for it. And, and most of the approvals that I've seen for GDPs have the twenty-year vesting approval. Regardless of what the timing is, you know, even if somebody, e- even if a developer has said that it's five years, you still get the twenty-year vesting schedule. And the reason is because sometimes market conditions change. Sometimes it takes longer. And yes, sometimes you have to come in for modifications. Right? And so a developer doesn't want to come in and, you know, prepare a GDP, go in for a site plan and not have that vesting schedule in place, you know, for, for twenty years. Because there's a lot of uncertainty. So I guess, and that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to, you know, we're saying that, you know, we could, we could put in a five to ten year, but we would still be looking for the twenty-year, you know, vesting schedule.
Well, it, the statute says it can't exceed twenty years and the planning board.
Stop, all right, stop right there. This is not going to be twenty years right now.
No, I agree. What I was saying is.
Counselor, I will not be voting for anything fifteen or twenty years. That, that's not happening. I mean, twenty years, I'll probably be living in Resurrection Cemetery in my grave plots. Come on, let's get real here.
Okay.
Well, the statute provides.
I don't care what the statute provides for.
And Mayor, if I may.
That's all we're saying. Yeah, go ahead.
The statute doesn't say you get twenty years. All the statute says is the most the planning board could ever give you is twenty. And that's why we're trying to look at for some limiting.
Put the cards on the table. Doesn't, doesn't the owner of the property have a contract purchase to sell off the, the first base? Yes or no? So you gotta have an idea, Ron, of how this is.
Well. One has nothing to do with the other. That's not something that's considered.
Really?
Really, really.
I respectfully disagree on that one. And that's why I'm going to vote tonight. Because I want.
Well, the planning board can certainly shorten the time period for the vesting. That's within its discretion. So in other words, if you're not willing to have, give us a twenty-year vesting schedule, it's within your discretion to shorten it, but it's not a reason to deny it.
I didn't say deny it. I said, I'm not voting on it tonight till we get this further pinned down.
And I think that's why the timing schedule helps the board consider the period of time for the applicant. So.
Right. But the longer we go without a GDP, the longer this will take. And, you know, we are, we are at a point where this has already been in the housing element fair share plan since twenty seventeen. So, you know, if we're here.
So what, counselor? So what? So what? You, you're pushing wood up a hill on this one.
Yeah, it's one month in, in the grand scheme.
Don't try to throw around COA to this board. Please, please don't insult our intelligence. All right?
I'm, I'm not trying to insult your intelligence. I'm just saying that, you know, the longer that this progresses, you know, we're saying we will give you a schedule.
Call for counsel. You don't have to lecture the board. I'm just telling you right now, we will not be voting on this tonight until we get this pinned down.
Okay. Well, we're proposing, you know, five to ten year.
All right. But this is something, when we adjourn this meeting to next month, this is all going to be worked out, as well as all the other stuff that's been added on here. And I have several other questions with the.
Well, and I'm sorry, we were not advised of this, just like the board has not been advised of it. We were just made aware of the, these issues at two thirty today. So I appreciate that you, I'm not trying to lecture you. I'm trying to say that we have just found out about these issues ourselves. So.
I'm not questioning that at all. It was over. So, all right. I mean, you, you understand my concerns from the statute. So if you want to continue going through the CME report. Not sure what we left off on the CME report.
Yeah, I'm trying to go back here.
I think we had the phasing on page thirteen.
Yeah, we were moving at thirteen. Phasing is where we stopped. I started the asking. So I guess it's item O. You want to move to building design?
I, looks like that's just a statement that full architectural elevations are not required. But, you know, we will be providing those during site plan.
Yeah, but would we have like some kind of theme or anything that, you know, the board can kind of get a vision of the plan or something like that, that we know of as to what the buildings are going to look like? Again, not holding to it. I understand, like, rules are not developed, but like a, you know, to show them.
Well, that's, I think. That's something that we can work with the board and the board professionals, but certainly, you know, that's after site plan. That, that could be something that we will address during site plan. The next item is ground floor commercial. Ron, if you could just verify and confirm that comment there.
Yeah, as required in the ordinance, the ordinance requires that the mixed-use buildings have commercial on the ground floor level only with residential above. It's our intention to comply with that.
Okay, thank you. And with regard to, let's see, I'm on page fourteen, the fiscal impact report. You know, we submitted the report and we plan on addressing these comments during site plan review. I think there were some questions with regard to the multipliers and whatnot, but we tried to submit the, a proposed fiscal impact in response to comments from the last hearing in February. And I think that takes us over to page fifteen S clubhouse. And I think, Ron, you addressed that before, that we have multiple clubhouses and that we will label that on the GDP. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't have any further questions for Mr. Allenback. The last two comments, two and three, I think that that's for Ms. Capone to respond to.
Uh, I, I.
Unless, Ron, you have.
Sorry, I just have one thing to add before you finish up there. Because in paragraph T, it talks about approval and outside agency, but it specifically talks about include a permit slash approval from NJ DOT regarding access to Route eighteen. Obviously, we provided a letter of no interest to the board under the last submission back in March. So there is no other NJ DOT approval required except for that. So I just want to make sure it's clear because the letter seems to indicate that we'll provide some kind of DOT approval.
Okay, thank you.
Noted. Thank you. Ms. Algar, what, before we, the next witness up, I want to clarify one thing, and Mr. Barlow, please correct me. Since we are talking about their timing schedule, the other item which was noted in the initial testimony, the municipal development agreement, I believe your testimony was that that would be provided after the GDP. Again, this is also one of the items that is included in the list of items which may be included under the GDP items to provide. So.
Well, actually, that's, that's an optional item. That, that has, in case law, has been held, that section forty-five point two has been held as optional items that are not, you know, can be required by ordinance, and it's not required by the TC zone ordinance. And we're saying that it certainly makes sense to have a developer's agreement after the GDP approval, so that we can set out the terms that are necessary to set out. Otherwise, right now, we don't have any specific terms to put in the developer's agreement, right? It would be consistent with whatever gets approved.
Theoretically, if you have case law that says something other than what the MUL says, I, I, they ask, you share that with me, you know, tomorrow or before the next meeting, okay? Because I'm just going by the MLUL. I don't. So.
Yeah. And same, that's why my question was like.
I, I mean, I, I generally agree that a developer's agreement would have to be entered into. I'm just not sure. I'm not sure. I'm not sure what I would prepare to put in a developer's agreement, other than maybe a developer's agreement that says, we'll have a developer's agreement. So. Yeah.
In terms of why, I'm sorry.
Only, I'm just putting the planner's hat, so please.
Oh, a hundred percent.
You know, I'm looking at it like a redevelopment plan would be. You know, you always have a redevelopment agreement and then you come before the planning board. In this case, you know, you don't have an agreement. You want to get a general development plan and then go back to the council for an agreement. It's just, I'm trying to.
No, no, no. The, the agreement is with the township, and it's based on whatever the resolution would provide in the GDP resolution. Typically, even with site plans, you know, if there's going to be a requirement for a developer's agreement, it's usually through resolution compliance. It's not something that's done before you have your site plan approval. So it's not done in conjunction with, it's done as a resolution compliance item. And that's what I'm saying is that with regard to the GDP, once we know what the terms are of this approval, then we'll be able to put together a developer's agreement. It's premature. And the developers are going to use with the township. It's not with the planning board. And then, Mr. Barlow, you could correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, no. And what I'm saying is, I don't even know what, what we put in a developer's agreement.
Right.
I mean, I agree with you, there would be one. I just don't know what it would be in it yet.
So you're saying that it's, that it is a resolution compliance item rather than, it would be premature right now? Is that are we agreeing? I'm not sure if we're agreeing or not.
No, no, no. I'm agreeing because I, I don't know how, I don't know how anyone could prepare one right now. So.
Gotcha. Right. I agree. I agree too. So.
So would the timing schedule and everything, Mr. Barlow, be part of the agreement? Or would that be something the planning board would decide on?
It's something that would be.
If this was, if this plays out and there is a general development plan that is ultimately approved, there would be a resolution approving the general development plan in whatever context it is with timing schedules or whatever and everything that the applicants agreed to. And as a condition, there would be, ultimately, the developer would agree to, would enter into a developer's agreement. But I, I could also foresee as each piece of this comes before the board at for site plan, there might be a developer's agreement for, that deals with different sections or different phases also. So there could be multiple developer's agreement. So there will be one in, in, at some point, absolutely.
And the other question, Ms. Algar, so the fiscal report, we have what's the conclusion? The answers will be provided during a site plan approval to the questions in the report?
Correct. In terms of the multipliers, I, and again, the fiscal impact analysis was provided as an accommodation, since that was something that the board professionals had asked for last time. I don't remember if it was you, Mika, or if Dawn had asked for it, but.
Yeah, we, we again, based it on the general development plan permitted contents list in the MLUL, and I think fiscal report is one of those items that we'd asked for. So we did get it in March, as you'd said. So.
Yeah.
We just reviewed that and had questions based on that. So.
And Malvika, I think it's something, if there's, there's questions in here, it's obviously based on what the mayor had said and what Mr. Barlow had said. We're not going to finish tonight. So if there's questions in it, we could probably try to get clarification for you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Algar. Nothing further right now.
Okay, thank you. I would like to call Ms. Christine Capone.
Good.
If she could be sworn in.
Madam Chair, can I jump in? I have two questions for Mr. All.
Sure.
Uh, Ron.
Go ahead.
The tower portion, the signage. I was around when the tower went up, and there was a big controversy in town about the size of the sign that went up on the tower, illumination and things like that. Are we going to tackle that issue in this general permit? Or is this going to have to wait for the site plan approval?
To be honest with you, Mayor, I haven't even thought about it.
Well, I have, because I've been around when that, that was first built.
Yeah. Obviously, it's a concern that, you know, we could discuss.
And just so you know, by the way, there was a big controversy when that building went up because it was lit up like a Christmas tree twenty-four seven, and the residents nearby were up in arms with basically landing, you know, living next to a, a light bulb, you know, a twelve-story light bulb. So we need to deal with that prior to voting on this and how that's going to happen. And the second issue is with the bike path on Skiles Avenue. Is there any reason why in that green section right there, why, where the Verizon building is, that you can't continue the bike path to where the new street's going to go, where the single-family homes are?
You mean in front of the Verizon building itself?
Yeah, the front of the Verizon building, going all the way down to where the new road is going to be backed by, I guess, Orchard.
Right.
And but path, because ultimately, the other section to connect up to Route eighteen.
Yeah, let me just double check on that. I'll try to get your answer before we finish tonight.
Okay, all right, thanks.
The one thing I will point out, Mayor, is I'm not sure where they're, according to my plans, that property line for Verizon is sitting pretty tight up against the curb. I don't want to be in a situation where I got to go out and try to get pri- you know, private.
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll work on that. So.
Let me, let me get you an answer on that.
Okay.
As well as the lighting, I'll.
Okay.
I'll discuss that and get back to his, what our intentions are as far.
Yeah, well, you, you could do that, you could do that, you know, for, for, have it, give it to the staff.
Right.
What's going to go for, you know, after this meeting.
But just, right, well, I just. Yeah, I just want to make sure we're clear that this is something that, you know, these are specifics that should be worked out at site plan. This is not for the GDP. So to the extent that it's going to hold up the GDP, we'll be happy to provide information, but it's not something that should be considered even at this, with the GDP.
Mayor, just so, just so I'm clear, the, the signage, it's size and lighting are the two concerns?
That's, that's correct, Ron. I mean, size and lighting.
Okay.
We need to set some parameters on that.
Understood. Thank you. Understood, thank you.
I think we can move on, um, Mr. Barlow.
Yes, I think you want to call Ms. Caphone.
Yes, please, if you could swear her in.
Find her, oh, there she is.
Hi, hello, does that make it easier?
Yep, I got you. If you could state your name, spell your last name and give us your professional address for the record.
Yes, of course, it's Christine, C H R I S T I N E, Caphone, C O F O N E. Business address is one twenty-five Half Mile Road, Suite two hundred, Red Bank, New Jersey, zero seven seven zero one.
If you could raise your right hand, you swear the testimony you you'll give before this board will be the whole truth?
Yes.
Your witness, Ms. Elgar.
Thank you, and Mr. Barlow, um Ms. Caphone was qualified last time, should I uh requalify her or is it okay if we just proceed?
Um, Madam Chair, are you okay since you qualified her as an expert last time?
I think it's okay to continue her qualification.
That's fine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, um so, Ms. Caphone, um if you had a, well, you had a chance briefly to look at the July tenth letter. If you could uh turn to page nine um with regard to the town square. Um there was a comment that the town square may not have been adequately integrated into the fabric of the development. If you could just go through um whether you believe that the town square. Um conforms with the intent of the redevelopment plan itself, I appreciate it. Or the TC zone, sorry, not.
Yes, yes, so when you're looking at the T E C zone, C C T E C D zone, there's a specific section, twenty-one thirty-two ten. That deals with the town square, so I appreciate um Ms. Apte's comments, I did have an opportunity to review that July tenth, twenty twenty-four letter. I have it in front of me and one of the sections in the T E C D zone states specifically. The location, dimension and composition of the pedestrian plaza portion of the town square. That shall be subject to the approval of the planning board. So I think that this is something that I take no exception to the location of the pedestrian square. I think it actually exceeds the requirements in the T E C D zone by about ten percent. So more than ample space to create a vibrant, welcome, inviting, meaningful, usable area. Right, the the ordinance is very specific in that it wants it to be have um high-quality materials, it wants it to have place for people to sit. A focal point, these are all things that given the fact that we actually exceed the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. For the pedestrian, for the plaza, I think we will certainly more than be able to accomplish the intent of the town square. As far as its location in the development, in my opinion, this project is going to be both a destination for the people who live in it, right? We're going to have a substantial number of both market rate and affordable housing units here. But it's also right off of eighteen and it will certainly be a destination for people who come in vehicular traffic as well. So certainly if somebody is there and stopping in to utilize one of the stores, they can park their car. Get get a get an acai bowl, get a coffee and go enjoy the town square. So it's something that is going to be able to be enjoyed and has been designed to be enjoyed by people who both live and who are coming to. You know, to utilize the the center overall. So I think that we we meet the intent of the ordinance, I think the fact that we have um parking on either side of the town square. Makes it accessible to people who may be visiting the center by um by car or walking. The other thing I would say is that right in the T E C D zone, this is thirty, section thirty-two eleven eight. It talks about creating positive pedestrian access. And the way the ordinance reads, it reads that positive pedestrian access shall be provided throughout, including delineated crosswalks. Handicap wraps and ramps and pedestrian signage, so we're certainly going to be doing that, you heard Mr. Allenback testify on direct. That we would be in fact providing a multi-use path for people who would be biking or walking throughout the development, I know um. It would be very, very granular, in my opinion, to put bike racks and those type of things on a GDP. I have had an opportunity in my twenty-eight years of practicing to work on a number of GDP ordinances. Um and GDP projects, whether it's in my capacity of representing the developer or in Wayne Township, I'm sitting as a special master. Where I've spent a lot of time reviewing a GDP ordinance up there. And I would say those are very granular things that I would say would not routinely be found on a GDP. I recognize that the the town square section of the ordinance does require those types of focal points, um artistic features. And they will certainly be incorporated. And I think that that's likely why um the or the T E C D zone just defer as the composition of the pedestrian plaza. To the planning board, because I think that that's something that, you know, will, we have had many meetings with township staff, with the public on the site. And I know that this this public, um this this town square will be an important part of this project. And you know, the developer certainly have made a commitment to making it a vibrant and meaningful usable space for this development.
Thank you, um and then I think the next um. Comment is on page fifteen, um dealing with the GDP ordinance itself. And if you could um just touch upon, for example, the uh the common open space and whether you believe it's adequate as well as some of the other. Um points that Ms. Apte makes there that with regard to section forty-five A, I think it is.
What page?
It's on page fifteen of CME.
Yep, got it.
Right, so um there's noted, we're we're providing twenty-two point nine percent um in open space. So I think that we are certainly providing, and again, I appreciate that it is very difficult to look at a site. The subject property is about seventy-five acres, right? So very difficult to look and see that we do have a number of areas that are meaningful on the property. With regard to abilities to put in um smaller sitting areas, areas to walk dogs, we have contemplated on this. Areas to um sit and have a cup of coffee. Those areas have certainly been contemplated by our project team, I can tell you, we've had countless of hours of meetings to go over those type of things. So I think that it is something that has been contemplated and it is something that when we get to the planning board um detail, you'll see. You'll see a greater level of detail, but I can assure you as as a planner who's been living with this project for several years now. That those are things that we have discussed at length in our meetings and are, I believe, shown on the GDP. And certainly um I can represent to you as as one of the, it's a consultant on the project, that we have certainly considered those things. Um in usable, meaningful, open space areas will absolutely be incorporated into this plan.
Okay, thank you. Um and with regard to the GDP, um and I believe it's on comment, it's page sixteen of the CME letter. Um if you could just give us in your opinion, whether you believe that the proposed development will have an unreasonable. Um adverse impact on the area, or maybe you actually believe it might have a positive impact on the area.
I think we will most definitely have a positive impact on the area, I think this is going to be um an ideal live-work-place space. That our our communities in the state of New Jersey and really throughout throughout our country are finding to be the most vibrant and desirable places. That make strong, strong communities, it's a, it's a wonderful location, it's got excellent, excellent access. It is going to be a mix of housing types, which is again, something that communities strive to achieve. Um I can assure you that when I went to the public meetings um that we had to talk to some of the public members on this site. Some had asked if they could put down deposits on on some of the residential portions of it. So I think it's something that people will be excited about and I think it's a great opportunity. Um as a planner to to be part of an exciting project like this, that has really a vibrant mix and a vital mix of. Of several different housing types, all included on one property in areas where you could work or or have regional. You know, certainly plenty of regional employment opportunities in the area, schools in the area, it's just a, it's a wonderfully situated site in the state. That has a great amount of opportunities, so I certainly appreciate the township's desire to make sure that you do incorporate, you know, the design and open space elements. To make it a meaningful open space area, but I think that you have uh certainly a a commitment on behalf of of this developer. That that they will achieve those those goals.
Okay, thank you, um I don't have any further questions if uh the professionals or the board might.
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
Ms. Apte, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rado, thank you, Ms. Chairman, uh um so a couple of follow-up questions, Ms. Caphone. Um just so uh my understanding is correct, uh I believe the discussions on this town center and the plan have. Not been part of the GDP review, but a different, you know, the concept plan, right? I mean, just making clarifying that, like the GDP is based on the ordinance that is, that has been uh adopted and in place. Since, I believe, two thousand seventeen, as Ms. Elgar said, so uh want to just clarify that. Um the other point regarding the town square and uh as testified uh by uh Mr. Ron today. That there are going to be uh additional clubhouses, uh you know, interspersed throughout the concept plan. Uh throughout the GDP, because from what the GDP we saw, there was one clubhouse to the northeastern side. And one town square again to the southeastern side, I've had, I'm considering not the top, sorry, so my. But you know what I mean.
I do know what you mean, yes.
So uh the intent of the town square as is, that the way we looked at the GDP is. Would you justify that it is the focal point or it is it at one corner of this building? And how is a single-family owner of this development going to have, you know, the the same focal point to the town center? Than the apartments that are right next to it, yeah.
So through the pedestrian connectivity, through the access to the pedestrian connectivity, you could have a single-family home there where the family may decide to take a walk. Or to ride their bikes, we'll have bike racks on site for sure, so there will absolutely um, there will not be vehicular connectivity to the single families. But we can certainly accommodate, you know, a pedestrian walk if it if something to be discussed at site plan. So I think that there's certainly ways to accomplish that, but to ans- answer your first question. Um it is governed by the T E C D zoning district standards, yes, the subject property, so just to make sure I get an answer to that on the record. Um that, yes, we are governed by the T E C D.
Okay, and then uh part of the testimony was the town square is, you know, going to be this pedestrian friendly boulevard and everything. Then how do we like kind of propose these, it's it's almost surrounded by uh, you know, vehicular um circulation. Neck around it with parking around it, how is it becoming that pedestrian boulevard or the village-style architecture? That I think the town center is intending to do over there?
So in addition to vehicular access, you will be able to have a sidewalk network, you know, throughout this community in a multipurpose path. And there will be bike racks proximate to the area, so that you will be able to achieve reaching the town square. Either by bike or by car or by um pedestrian access, which to me speaks directly to. The town's desire to make it a vibrant and accessible park, so if somebody's on a bike ride, they can stop in, if they're walking, they can stop in. If they're in their car and they just want to, you know, grab a few things and maybe have their coffee or their their slice of pizza or whatever they're having there, they can do that. So by having all of those modes of getting to it, makes it, in my opinion, more accessible to to this community.
Okay, I have nothing further, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of Ms. Caphone? Ms. Cologne, Caphone, sorry. Okay, we some don't think they have any further questions.
Yeah, Reverend Kenny, I have a question, since I live in the area at the seniors' building. Uh the question is, the seniors have been asking questions whether or not they'll have uh handicap access for wheelchairs. Or anything for the seniors, because they, we do live in the seniors' building and it uh involves us trying to get to the center. Maybe to for a cup of coffee or a sandwich or whatever, just to to see what's going on in in the center. We want to know if we can have have that type of access for handicapped persons.
Well, I believe that, I mean, Ron, if you want to. Answer that, but I believe our, we're going to comply with all accessibility standards.
Uh yes, Reverend, we're we're required, obviously, to provide um whatever ADA rules and regulations as far as number of handicap spaces. Uh van accessible spaces, um ramps, all the ramps have to be in compliance with all the ADA regulations, so. Uh that'd be part of the site plan to show those details of exactly all the accessible routes throughout the site, where the parking is. On how the uh ADA spaces are dispersed throughout the site, that's all something that we have to do uh by law and it will be required and provided at at site plan.
Yeah, I understand that, that's from the state, but from our building over to the site, that's what we're we're concerned with. You'll have that, I know what the state requires.
Uh are you asking me if I'm going to be providing a handicap access from your building to our site along property I don't own?
Yeah, that's going to be tough for us to be able to do.
Well.
I mean, Mr. Barlow.
Well, you're saying this, you know.
Oh, well.
Okay, we'll have to do that later, then, thank you.
Has, has that been answered?
No, I really didn't get a a good answer on it.
Well, if I may.
Okay, go ahead.
No, if I may, I I guess the answer is that that's not part of our property. Um if that's, you know, something, I I can't speak to it now, but that's certainly not something that. We are capable of providing at this point direct, you know, from from the senior center to our site. That's certainly not going to be uh something that we can do, that's something maybe the township can do, I don't know, there's.
Okay, I I I understand what you're saying now, okay, thank you.
But certainly it will be accessible and, you know, there are, you know, plenty of parking for, you know, for there to be accessibility. Whether it's, you know, but obviously have to come to the site. But. Maybe there's something we can do to work with the with the town, but at this point, you know, with regard to the GDP, that's not something, it's it's not a consideration. Or shouldn't be a consideration with regard to the GDP itself.
Okay, Ms. Elgar, do you have anything else?
Um I do not, that will be the end of our presentation, thank you.
Madam Chair, you should open to the public, I don't think there's anybody from the public on it, but just for completeness.
Okay, um. Members of the public, uh if you've heard the testimony of two witnesses, Mr. Ron Allenback and Ms. Um Caphone. Does anyone in the public have any questions of uh either of these two witnesses? If you do, please indicate by raising your hand.
No, I'm Madam Chair.
Thank you, close to the public.
So Mi- Ms. Elgar, I mean, procedurally, I think you understand that, I don't think the, I don't think I'm confident or comfortable. Even asking the board to um have a vote on this matter, I know several members have indicated that that they're not comfortable going forward. Um with a vote this evening, I think there are items that we've discussed and I think Mr. Allenback understands. Um places where things need to be noted on the GDP, um as per Ms. Apte's report. I think we need some more concrete information about um the proposed timing schedule. Um and we also, I mean, you did submit a very comprehensive traffic engineer report. And the township's um traffic expert, Ms. Dolan, who was unavailable this evening. Um I'd like to see if she would like to just comment and um since there are several items in Ms. Apte's report. Um which she deferred to the township's traffic expert and just to get her comments on it. Which I think is also contemplated under fifty-five D dash forty-five point two. I think you understand, not only my position, but the board's position in terms of um bringing you back to uh. To answer those questions that we had, get more information so that the board is in a, in a better position to. To vote on it.
Um and I can understand that, it's just that we have, I mean, this is been lingering, I guess. For this project has been lingering, I guess, since twenty seventeen. Um and a lot of time, you know, while we submitted our GDP in twenty twenty-one. Um there was also delays that were had because we were trying to work with the professionals as well as the town. And we had multiple meetings trying to work out something where the town. Um and would be, you know, willing to either amend the TC zone. If that's what they were going to do. You know, willing to either amend the TC zone, if that's what they were in it to do. Um, we explored a lot of different options and so, you know, we're in a position now where, you know, we'll, we'll be. Open to granting um. Maybe to the next meeting, but otherwise um we would not agree to any further extensions. And, you know, certainly the next meeting is what we would hope and as long as we get carried without further notice.
You, you would of course be carried without any further notice if anyone's on this meeting from the public. Please note, the, the matter would be carried to the August meeting. I know we have um a lot on that evening. But obviously, if we can get the information that, you know, you heard. I think it's been made clear in terms of the information that's being sought. Um, so that the planning board can bring this matter um to a vote. And again, I, I can't speak to when it was filed or how long it's been kicking around. The planning board has heard this for two nights. I think they've been very diligent. And, you know, so I can understand from your perspective, it may have taken a long time, but I mean. I think this board's trying to act as diligently as possible and again, wants to make a educated decision. With the information that the MLUL says that they are entitled to, so.
No, understood. And we'd be willing to, you know, carry it to August. Um, if, you know, provided also, if, if I may. You know, I know that the traffic engineer is going to take a look at the um, our traffic impact statement and provide comments. Um, provided we can have those comments relatively quickly so that we could actually, you know, be able to digest them. Um, that would be appreciated.
Promise you'll get more than five hours.
I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Just a quick question for you. Uh, when, when is the August meeting?
Fifteen.
August the fourteenth.
Oh, fourteenth, I'm sorry. I'm doing zoning, my.
Is it also at seven thirty? Is that right? Again, right?
Yes, yes, that's a regular meeting, seven thirty. Okay.
Okay.
Laura, Laura's got me back, coming back on the wrong night.
She wanted the zoning board to see you.
Okay, I'm doing five zoning tomorrow. Marie thinking ahead, sorry guys.
Onto the next day.
Alright, so August fourteenth.
If we're clear, then see you on August the fourteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Stay safe.
You too.
Take care.
Um, item number eleven. Discussion to authorize foresight planning to determine whether block twelve, uh two oh one lot, one point oh one and. Block two oh two, lot forty-two oh two needs to have a study as an area in need of development.
Um, members of the board, so this is a um. Two parcels, block two oh two, lot forty-two point oh two and block two oh one. Lot one point zero one, um which are over by the Denellen uh border and also more commonly known as seventeen ninety-one South Second Street. And seventeen seventy-six South Second Street. Um, so it's a request to um. Have the board retain foresight planning so that they can do an area in need of redevelopment study for the properties. Any members have any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? This, this uh property located at seventeen ninety-one South Second Street. Any representation as to? How badly? How, has anyone seen it?
Um, I mean, as to that, I believe.
Madam Chair, if I, I can, I can tell you right now, we get a lot of illegal dumping going on out there. I think it's on a regular round to TPW with all the illegal dumping that's going on out there right now.
I, I mean, that's what Mr. Clark and I guess will ascertain, but um it appears that the, the area will uh may certainly qualify, but. You know, he'll do his study and he'll um give a report to the board and.
Okay, can I, can I get a motion to have um Mr. Clark and do the study? To designate it as an area in need of redevelopment. Can I get a motion?
Reverend Kenny, I make a motion that uh Mr. Clark can looks at the area for redevelopment on uh. Uh, Second Street and uh Biscataway.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, do I have a second?
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
I don't think he's here.
There he is.
There he is, okay.
Oh, he's been here. He was here. And Madam Chair.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, out of abundance of caution, I prepared a resolution. Um, so it would be appropriate so that Mr. Clarking can get working right away if.
Motion to approve. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So move, uh, Madam Chair.
Second, do I have a second?
On Corcoran's second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. Okay, we have concluded our agenda for tonight. Everyone stay safe. Do I have a motion for an adjournment? No one wants to go home? Oh.
I want to go home. I'm not home, I have to go. Ms. Corcoran, do I have a second, please?
Uh, do I have a second, please?
Mr. Atkins.
Mr. Atkins, there he is. All, all approved? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you. I think that's everyone.
Have a great night, everyone.